Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 27th, 2020 meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. Made the decision to go back to remote meetings following the town landing in the yellow and what seems to be a slow uptick of cases, both locally and certainly more in urban areas of the state. So that's why we're doing this. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, there are five selectmen present as well as Town Administrator Derek Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, last week, the town lost a longtime employee and a really nice person. Melissa Born was the Assistant Town Accountant. She worked for the town for, I believe it was 23 years, perhaps it was more. She did an outstanding job. She was a great employee. More importantly, she was a pleasant person and a nice person. Had a good sense of humor, loved her town, and was really everything we could hope for in a resident of this town. And I'd like to have a moment of silence for Missy, please. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Carol, would you lead us in the pledge, please? You gotta turn on your mic, though. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's see, are there any citizens here to speak to us tonight?
For the record, Mr. Bowen is also present.
Yep.
To counsel.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no citizens, we'll go to board comments. Alan?
The only comment today, the governor came in and talked about the increase throughout the state and talked specifically about like local hockey teams and school hockey, et cetera, shutting that down as well. So we have our neighbor Plymouth, which has had to go to what we call Phase Three, Step One, which unfortunately means that they have to go back from where they were at Step Two, which means restaurants have to be smaller capacity. There could be issues with the gyms opening up, et cetera. So as much as we hate it, you know, if we aren't careful, we could be in the same spot and then we're gonna end up having a lot of businesses in really serious troubles. So please follow the rules because the end result is gonna be pretty bad for us if that happens. Thank you.
Patrick?
No, I have nothing.
Jim? I'm gonna turn on your mic, Jim.
How's that? Is that a little better?
Much better.
Clarification now, I thought last week we decided that all boards would be going remote. Is that the case or what's the, what's the status of that? Because, you know, I'm just, I just want it for clarification purposes.
I did discuss it with the town administrator. I think what we basically decided was that we needed some time to allow the information department, Information Technology Department, to get up and running with the Zoom meetings again and also WCTV. Remember, we've got to prevail upon them to help us out as well. So Derek, that about the size of it?
Yeah, we know we don't have the ability to do each and every one, especially, you know, having, having either IT staff or WCTV every single night with them. So that's why we're just trying to make sure we've got all our ducks in a row. But that's, the Selectman Muniz is correct. That's what we're leaning towards. I know one voted last night that they didn't necessarily want to go remote, but it's, but that's not necessarily what was being offered in the long run, if that makes sense.
Gotcha.
WCTV does the, I believe, they're the ones that do the Zoom meetings for us?
That's correct.
And some, some boards do those on their own as planning and zoning. I think Director Buckland acts as the administrator and possibly, I don't know about Concom. Maybe someone could chime in on that. And I just, you know, I just was wondering if we were gonna follow through with what we had stated.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Ending. Judy?
Yes, have a couple of announcements, I guess. Talked last week about the Dog Park Calendar Contest. If you go to gogofotocontest.com backslash Wareham Dog Park, all one word, you can enter for $10 to get a picture of your dog on a calendar. The calendar will be for sale for $25 when it is produced. The top 13 entrants will have their picture featured in one of the months as well as on the cover. And I think it's kind of fun, so it is a fundraiser. Just to remind people, Good Shepherd has takeout meals every Thursday from four to five and the first Tuesday of the month from three to five, they have a food pantry. Damian's pantry is open Mondays 10 to 4, Wednesdays 10 to 4, Fridays 10 to 3. The First Congregational Church has a thrift shop, which is open Thursdays 10 to 2, Fridays 10 to 2, Saturdays 12 to 4. Turning Point and Baby Point have drive-through collections on Thursday, every third Thursday is from 9 to 12. Wesley United Methodist Church has a thrift shop, Thursdays 1:30 to 4:30, Friday 1:30 to 4:30, Saturday 10 to 1. And the Garden Club is selling cookbooks Thursday, November 5th, from 11 to 1 at St. Patrick's Hall. There are lots of places to go on Halloween Day. The Y is having a trunk or treat from 2 to 4. The onset fire department is having one from 4 to 8. The Community Youth Empowerment Group is having one from 2 to 4 at Gibbs Ballpark Field, and there are probably others online. All of them require social distancing and masks. And of course, the mask can be part of your costume. I think that's it. Thank you.
Maybe that's the point Alan's trying to make tonight.
Yeah.
I really, I'm sorry, I skipped right over announcements. Alan, did you have any announcements?
No, just I'm celebrating Halloween early.
Okay, we see that. Jim, any announcements or?
We have a Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District meeting tomorrow night. It's a hybrid meeting, so anybody who's interested and doesn't want to attend it over in Marion, you can do it via Zoom. You don't have, I didn't even check to see if the link was put up online. So we're having that meeting and we'll be addressing some issues related to that later. Thank you.
Okeydoke. Patrick?
Nope.
None, okay. I don't have any announcements, so we'll go back to the board comments. I had a comment, we obviously received quite a few emails regarding the onset basketball hoops, and I just wanted the town administrator to explain what his response is. If you would, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, first off, that one thing's I'll ask the board is if, because I know this is a recreational facility, so it doesn't fall under the Selectmen's direct purview. So if you'd like me to respond to them directly, I certainly will. As we know, there's been, the last few, few weeks, it's been drastic uptick. I think we've had 10 more cases since Friday, and I'll get into that a little later. But, you know, frankly, at this point with what we're seeing around us, basically being a sea of red, ourselves being yellow, potentially trending to red, I don't see us making any changes at this point. In fact, I know, speaking with the Health Department, such, we wouldn't make any such changes, but, you know, let's, let's work together, get, get us back down into the green, because I think getting, getting one hoop up makes sense when it, when it's safe. And then, you know, all of us would love to see us go back to a true normal, not a new normal, when it comes to, to our facilities. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I think, I think it's important to respond to the people making the inquiry and the request so that they know that they were heard. So we look forward to you doing that. But I also felt it was important to get it out there, you know, publicly as well, because when you've got 30 or 40 emails, obviously, people are gonna be talking about it here, there, and everywhere. So that's, that's why I called upon you tonight to talk to that. Let's see.
And the whole board, the whole board's fine with my responding?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, appointments, reappointments and interviews. We have Conservation Commission?
Yes, we have two applicants, Ronald Bessie and Carol Malonson. Both of them have been recommended for appointment by the Conservation Commission. I understand from the Conservation Commission that they have been provided with some training already and will be provided with more training on an ongoing basis, both from Mr. Pocette as well as online. So the paperwork is in order as well.
Hey, questions from the board? We'll start with Ms. Bessie. Alan?
No questions at all. Thanks for applying.
Okay. Patrick?
Is it, isn't he like an associate member now or something?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Jim, questions for Mr. Bessie?
No, thank you.
Judy, questions for Mr. Bessie?
No, just make the comment that both of them are associate members at the moment.
Yes, the only comment I would make is that we're informed that they do attend the meetings, so, which is good. It's always helpful to attend the meetings when you're an associate, even if you're not necessarily involved in the decision-making. Okay, as regards Mr. Bessie, is there a motion?
Motion so made. Second. Full point.
Okay, it's gonna have to be a roll call vote because we're meeting remotely here. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Okay, it's 5-0-0, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Bessie, for stepping up again, and we look forward to seeing how you perform as a full-time member.
I'm excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Next up, we have Carol Malonson. How are you?
I'm well, and you?
Very good, thanks. Judy, once again, all the superlatives that you stated earlier applied here as well?
Yes, they do.
Okay, questions for the applicant, Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Jim?
I'm good.
Judy?
No, thank you.
I don't have anything other than to say that it's a little bit different than the playground, but you're still having fun.
Well, I have the time and let's get all this stuff done.
Okeydoke. Let's have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that the Carol Malonson be appointed to the Conservation Commission. I don't have the dates, the expiration date on either of these in front of me, I'm sorry.
The 2023, I believe, when I lect earlier, and it was, it seemed to be in sequence so that they wouldn't be
Right.
bunching up, so.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Me, yes. It's all unanimous, 5-0-0. Thank you for stepping up and
The paperwork will not be ready until probably Thursday at the earliest in the Selectmen's office. When the paperwork is signed, we will give you a call and you can pick it up and go get sworn in at the town clerk's office.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks for stepping up. Okay, next up, we have an appointment for the Board of Health.
Yes, it's a recommendation to appoint Kathleen Waldron to the Board of Health.
Okay, just for the record, Ms. Waldron, if you could just explain your qualifications and your interests briefly, so the public can hear?
Yeah, of course. Thank you, everyone, first of all. I am a graduate of Syracuse University, where I have my degree in civil engineering. I've been working in the public health field since 2014 in Middleborough, Stoughton, and currently Avon. I'm the health agent for Avon. I have my registered sanitarian's certification that I got in 2018, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, well, thank you. Questions for this applicant, Alan?
No real questions. Just thank you very much again for stepping up. It's good to see someone with a really strong background in a particular field for the Board of Health. Mr. Ethea can use all the help he can right now with what's going on.
I think we are.
Patrick?
Yeah, she's gonna be an associate member, right?
Correct.
Okay, just checking, just wanna make sure, because I know there's no space for a full-time member. Okay, I have no problem, she sounds great to me.
Great, thank you. Jim?
No, we're good, and thanks for applying and stepping up.
Thank you.
Judy?
No, thank you, and thank you very much for applying.
Likewise, here, you certainly have the credentials to do this. Can we get a motion, please?
Make a motion to appoint Kathleen Waldron as an Associate Member of the Board of Health.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Me, yes, 5-0-0, it's unanimous. And as we told the other applicants, the paperwork will be ready in the Selectmen's office for you to pick up probably Thursday.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up. Okay, next up, don't have any licenses and permits, Town Business, COVID-19 update. We already got a little. Cases going up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna pull it up. Yeah, so we had had a report on Friday, but the, since then, we've had eight new cases, and we have a total of 40 new confirmed cases in the town in the past three weeks, so that's since October 5th. So, you know, we've had 65 cases since the 1st of December, so these are, we're pretty much into our, our April numbers, if you will. So again, you know, there's, there's a lot you can do, and I think some of us are just, we're getting wrapped up and not thinking about, about our lives. And I'll give you an example for myself. Yesterday, I was not feeling well, and, you know, there was no fever, but there were sort of the chills and some of the body aches and wasn't feeling well. And, you know, my wife, who's all, who's in Human Resources, said, hey, you have to self attest. You can't go into work until you, until you test. And, you know, I just wasn't even thinking, because I was just thinking about the whole day's grind. We did the rapid test today, I got that done, so it came back negative, which is fantastic. And, but I think we need to remember that, you know, and this time, the most important thing is to watch out for our, our fellow person, our families, and, and not take these risks and just realize that it's not a, you're, you're not being tough when you're, when you're going into work or doing things, you know, even though you're not feeling well. That used to be, that was the old way. So think about it, you're putting others at risk, and, you know, the best thing you can do is, if you gotta take a day out of, out of work, you know, do it and make sure you get tested and take care of it. So, you know, that's, that's one of the things. This, the Saturday's Halloween, you know, obviously, we've talked about it for a while, there's no, we're not looking at canceling it, it's just be safe, be smart, talk to your children and realize, you know, there might be some homes where the lights aren't on, where they, they don't want people coming up, and that's okay. So it's, it's work and, and respect people's wishes. And if you're, I know it's tough as a parent, I have two young children, if, if you're concerned, you know, there's, there's probably a couple other options you can do, including trying to do a little haunted Halloween trick-or-treat in your own house. So we've done that before, so, you know, everyone, please take care and stay well.
Okay, thank you. Refuge update. You're chuckling, what do you have for us?
Oh, it's just a regular snowball going downhill.
Oh, and we're at the bottom awaiting it to
Bigger and bigger.
Run us over, is that what you're saying?
You know, just a lot of moving parts, and I think on, on one part of it, we'd prob, we'd probably like the board to, to vote, I discussed this with Derek earlier, and confirm that we will be not, will, will not be putting the amended and restated agreement on the
Stop what you're doing and watch the meeting.
No, how do I get into it?
All right, give me, let me Just a minute, just a minute.
Well, hello there, whoever you are.
Kind of wondering where that's gonna go.
Yeah.
Can you read it?
Judy, right.
So, so there was some question on, brought up by one of the members that sent it out to all of the CMW, whoops, what happened there? I lost you, here we go. So they stated that, you know, maybe we shouldn't take the vote on a number of issues unless, until we heard what Wareham was doing officially, either from a vote from the Selectmen that we would not put that on the warrant into our wait-to-town meeting. We really can't afford to do that, as we need to move forward and look out for us. So at that, I will turn it over to Mr. Sullivan and let him have some input on that.
I, I agree with Selectman Muniz, you know, they just, they were a little concerned that we could, I know at least one person popped the restated and amended agreement on a special town meeting or something. So I think if the vote, if the board wouldn't mind just voting to, that we, we have no intention to vote on the restated and amended agreement for the CMW district, we can bring that forward as a, as an official action.
Well, I mean, I'll take it on to 48-hour business if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll move it. So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Jim, roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, 5-0-0, so.
With, speaking with Selectman Muniz, Mr. Chairman, my intent is to go to, to attend tomorrow's CMW meeting and request that they allow the Town of Wareham to operate the transfer station beginning January 1.
Okay.
And I, you know, I think this will be helpful with, with achieving that, and we might, I don't know what's gonna happen, but there might be some persons in Carver that look to use it as well, so we'll do what we think is, is in best interest for all parties to try and make sure that we have this facility continued in operation.
Yep, and the other members are certainly aware that this is the direction we're going in. I mean, I'm sure they follow the media reports, correct?
I believe so, I, I hope so, so let's see what we, we get tomorrow. And I think a little bit's gonna be, and I think Selectman Muniz can talk to it, we're gonna be, as we're in crunch time, there's gonna be some things just moving forward and trying to get them done. So we'll bring as much back in front of the board, but some of it's going to be sort of just moving it along.
Well, I mean, we've handed it off basically to you two to make it happen, so, I mean, unless somebody else has a problem with that, I don't see what the big deal is. Jim?
No, it's, you know, we appreciate the support, and it's just, you know, there's a lot going on and in and outs and dealing and working, working with the other towns. And, you know, when town's leaving the district at this point in time, the other town has shown some interest and possibly, as is Mr. Sullivan, I believe, stated, possibly buying stickers to utilize the facility, and if that can, if we can work something out on that, that would help with some additional income to offset the operational costs. So again, tomorrow should be an interesting meeting, and I am glad Mr. Sullivan's gonna be there and officially make the request for the town. And he's been working with Dave Menard and Mike Cipione from, is that Weston, Weston and Sampson?
Correct.
And trying to put some things together. They've had some discussion with our executive director, Mr. Jeffrey Osuch, on, you know, tonnage and, and numbers and whatnot, so it's coming together well, and I want to thank him and, him and Dave and Mike and, of course, Joe, Joe Benedict, who's the other CMW board member, for all their help with, with this, through this last year. Thanks.
Okay, good. Was there anything further you needed in terms of a Board of Health regulation, or is there anything to report on that? I know we had discussed that.
I would ask Mr. Sullivan and possibly have Attorney Bowen address that.
Yeah, I think we, Rich can get in as, as deep or shallow as he wants, but the, we've gone through some information, and Rich has been very good at finding some, some past items that have passed muster before, and I think we're, we're seeking some guidance to make sure that it's still good and it's not a stale ruling from the past. That's not accurate, Rich.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, last Tuesday night, the board tasked me with finding some law that would justify the Town of Wareham granting an exclusive rights contract to a holler. After some lengthy research, I found a late 80s mass appeals court case called Lomberto versus Franklin. In that case, the Town of Franklin adopted a bylaw that required the trash wall, one and two family houses be handled by a town-selected holler who got the contract as a result of a public bidding process. Another holler challenged the validity of the bylaw, and the Mass Appeals Court, on review of that challenge, decided that the bylaw was legitimate and was a proper exercise of the town's authority. What I've done is I've sent a copy of the Town of Franklin bylaw, which is pretty substantially what you have been talking about, to the Assistant Attorney General, saying that it was likely that the town would consider adopting a bylaw in substantially similar form. I asked if, in view of the Lomberto case, whether she would be willing to approve such a bylaw today. I received a response from her, we have on Sunday, saying that she was taking it under review, and I expect that we will have a word back from her in the near future. I would expect that she would approve it, since the Mass Appeals Court approved it. So I think we have the text of a bylaw and a reasonable likelihood of having such a bylaw approved. Hey, well, that's good, we're making progress on that. Is there anything else, refuse-wise?
I will, I will talk with Derek and Attorney Bowen this week, just to catch up a little bit.
Yep, okay, thanks, Jim. Derek, you all set?
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next up, we have a hiring ratification vote?
Yes, we have a ratification for Douglas Pennard, Lead Maintenance Foreman at, uh, Wareham, WPCF. And it, um, the paperwork is all in order.
Okie doke.
I will, I will move to ratify.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was waiting for the punchline here. Uh, we have a motion to ratify, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero, it's ratified. Uh, town meeting warrant articles, I don't think we're any further down the road of knowing numbers, are we, Derek? Microphone. You didn't have your mic on.
Do you think the handshake gives you enough? This means no.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the non-site people who can't understand you out there. Uh, let's see, what else? So nothing there, anybody have anything else for town meeting articles? We good? All right, anybody have any 48 hour business, Alan?
No.
Patrick?
No.
Jim?
No.
Judy?
No.
Derek, do you have anything else? No?
No, I, I did not. I said, we'll go through the TA report and see what the board's pleasure is on, uh, on a few items.
All right, okay, well, that's next, so have at it.
Okay, um, today I, I had a good meeting with, uh, with Bill Burns and then Phil Olivera, who's the Vice President of Support Services at South Coast Hospital Group. They were giving me an update on, on how they're, they're going along. It's like any, uh, any construction project, it looks like they're moving a bunch of dirt and getting nowhere, but they, they've been making progress and the, uh, excuse me, they're moving into the next stage of doing a lot of the, uh, oh shoot, the, 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 the stuff in the ground. Why, why I'm saying ground supports, uh, you know, I, I can't think of-
Utilities.
Um, no, but we'll, we don't need to do the guessing game. Puddings, puddings, correct, thank you.
You didn't spend much time, you didn't spend much time on construction sites as a youth, did you?
No. Um, so, you know, that's gonna be sort of the next stage, uh, gonna be doing a lot of those. And then, you know, like any of the construction sites, you'll actually see, and some will, will look like an expo, explosion of growth. But the big thing, and, uh, there'll be announcements coming forward, is that next Monday is when they start moving the emergency room entrance from Main Street to High Street. And I'm going forward this to all of you. Uh, it's, it's gonna be very difficult to, to see, but I just got this today. They're, they're requesting to put signage up in, uh, some of the different locations. Some is on their own site, but there were a couple different, uh, you know, there'd be some of the, there are three Windmaster stands that are two-sided, that would be located right on, uh, the entrances from, uh, Main Street to Center Street, Center Street to High Street and such, and a couple other different locations. So I know some of these would be, uh, technically on town property, so.
Why don't we get the, uh, why don't we get the police trailer sign and stick that in the bump out in front of where they're working?
So, that bump out's covered up right now.
Right.
Fencing, I think they'll be, but that should be-
Yeah, that's true, they're still, they're probably still doing work there. But is there some way to get that on, even take a parking space? And just put it up, put it up, you know, soon. I would put it up this week to give, you know, so people see it so that, you know, when, when they, you know, break their arm or something and they're driving themselves to the hospital, uh, you know, they remember that they saw the sign and they don't, they don't go to the Main Street entrance.
Yeah, and I think they're gonna put up a lot of signage too if, and, uh, like I said, some, excuse me, it's gonna be on town property. I'm hoping this, since this isn't really a special event, this is, uh, is a public safety matter. We can forego the need of, uh, of what we usually go through and just get that up.
Yep.
We have a motion to approve the temp, the temporary placement of signs on town property.
As according to the chart that he just held up.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy, uh, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick? You there? Well, we'll go to Jim.
Yes.
Uh, Judy?
Yes.
Going once, going twice, going thrice for Patrick?
So.
Okay, did we get, was that you, Patrick? No, apparently not. Uh, okay, uh, myself, yes, four zero zero on that one. Yeah, see.
And again, I, I wanna thank them for, uh, South Coast and specifically Phil Olivera and, um, and for, uh, for all their hard work moving that along. I know, uh, when COVID came along, there's other, other large hospitals, uh, one down in Cape Cod that's totally stopped some of their, their plans. So, uh, I'm glad to see they're, they're, they're a great partner in moving forward with, uh, getting, getting better services for our residents.
Yeah.
Um, next item is, uh, we've been approached by a developer seeking a zoning change. This would require a special town meeting. And, uh, I believe I'll have a physical copy of that. Uh, send it to the Board of Selectmen. So, uh, you can have in your hands, I'll send it to, to Ken as well. And I'd like to see if, uh, Ken, myself, we'd be on the agenda next week's, uh, next week's meeting.
Yeah, um, I did send out a text to the board yesterday to see if, uh, people were available to meet next Thursday. I don't wanna meet on Election Day next, next week. Uh, you know, that's, that's a day that should stand alone for the, for the people that are running for federal office. And so, uh, Jim, are you available on Thursday? I think you were the only one I haven't spoken to yet.
What, what time would that be?
Two to seven, I guess. And unless, unless there's a conflict for you.
No, I, I-
Okay, so we'll meet next, just, just, and this is for the media as well, we'll be meeting next Thursday at seven o'clock. Another reason is, you know, with the way voting is going and everybody coming out, you know, for Tuesday night, I didn't want our vehicles in the town hall parking lot. They might need the spaces with the hordes, uh, rushing to get their last minute votes in, so.
I thought they'd be rushing to come to the Selectmen's meeting.
That's okay, if we don't do the right things, they might be rushing us after Selectmen's meeting. That's, that's how that works. Uh, okay, yeah, we, we can do that, uh, come before. Uh, is the proponent gonna be part of this as well? Derek?
Um, I can certainly ask. So.
Okay. Fair enough, we'll put that on there. Anything else under your report?
Um, no, that, I'm trying to think. That should be, um, it for now, I do, uh, thank you for, um, mentioning the passing of Missy. She's been, uh, you know, she's been a part of, of the town hall staff from before I arrived, but has always been there when she was down Treasurer Collector's Office, uh, then moved up to, uh, Accounting to the Assistant, uh, Town Accountant position. And, you know, just, just honestly, one of the nicest people around. So it's, um, it's a huge loss for all of us, so thank you for taking the time mentioning her.
Yeah. Um, let's see, liaison initiative reports, we'll start with Alan.
Uh, no real, no real meetings in the last week. Uh, the only thing we have coming up on the 29th, uh, the final rules for marijuana delivery programs. Uh, Campus Control Commission should be putting it through on the 29th and finalizing that. I know we've had a application about delivery and stuff and of course, the rules are not in place yet. And it looks as if they wanna make sure that minorities, you know, equity, et cetera, have a shot. And they're not looking for any firms that have, uh, basically gonna go ahead and try and have, you know, one major, uh, delivery company covering a whole bunch of areas. So it's gonna be quite restrictive with how the, we, you know, delivery works. So we need to take a look at that after tomorrow. Actually, sorry.
I think that's an important point too, because we, we limited, uh, the amount of retailers we had in town. And if a delivery company is delivering their own, um, you know, if they're, if they're basically building the, a, a vertical model and they're, they're manufacturing and selling their own products within our town, is that a sort of a de facto, uh, retail license?
Yeah, and that's, that's a concern.
It comes close there, but they have, they have they have to sell actually to a retailer in order to sell in town, so we still get money. But, uh, th- this question is about how this is gonna work, so, uh, we need to tread lightly on this one.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, and looking at it, um, you know, if, if individuals or companies are already established in other, other cities or locations, um, do they still get preferential treatment?
No, not on this one, Jim. This one here, they're taking a real hard line on, uh, making sure it's competitive, it's open and, uh, trying to definitely avoid having two or three major companies, you know.
Yeah, I, I, cause I, you know, I just kinda see that happening maybe. And I wasn't sure how it affected, um, the, the application and, and the, uh, as, as it's being presented at this point in time.
Yeah, we make, we would do a host agreement, but at the end of the day, the Campus Control Commission will definitely vet and be very careful who they actually, um, approve. So we could approve somebody as a host agreement, but it doesn't mean they're gonna get, you know, actually get a final license.
Thank you.
Well, as rate that commission proceeds, I don't think we're gonna be inundated with, uh, you know, guys putting out rooftop signs all of a sudden.
Yeah, they've actually got their executive director back in place and they've replaced everybody that's moved on or whatever. So I expect to see a lot quicker action, especially, I think we have seven to eight still pending, uh, you know, final approvals.
Yeah, we do, and it would be nice if we could get out of molasses mode on that, on that board up there. Uh, anything else, Alan?
No, just happy Halloween.
Well, you're certainly festive tonight. Uh, Patrick?
My boat dies nice and bright.
Patrick, do you any liaising, you, you back with us?
Must be a long time in the bathroom.
Yeah, well, uh, let's see, Jim?
Um, no, I, I said we have our CMW meeting tomorrow. It's, uh, uh, gonna be, it's a very important meeting, there's a lot going on as far as, um, you know, presenting to the board, our request for, uh, operating the Rochester, uh, facility. And there's another, a, a few other items on there as, as we're wrapping up, um, not being operational as a district in a sense. Um, uh, so, we'll, we'll, we'll move forward on that and we'll have some information for you next week on it. Um, some of the other me, uh, boards are doing hybrid meetings. I, I did go to the, uh, not hybrid meeting, but the, um, uh, recycling committee meeting and, uh, it was good. You know, I hadn't seen him in a, a while, cause I didn't meet for a while and I, I couldn't make, uh, 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 the last meeting, so it was nice touching base and, and, uh, as we move forward, uh, with Rochester, maybe we can catch some tips from them on what works and doesn't work as far as recycling goes. They've been doing it, uh, pretty steady for I don't know how many years and a lot of commitment, a lot of, you know, by all the boards, but not just their monthly meeting, but on the Wednesdays and Saturdays, there's a lot of hours put in by the volunteers. Uh, sorting and everything, so, you know, it was good, thanks.
Well, thank you. Uh, Judy?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I did, um, go to the Board of Health and alerted them last week to the, um, ongoing discussions about the trash pickup. And then the other thing I wanna make sure that everyone knows about, and I, I know that some people do, is that the Department of, um, the DHCE is actually offering COVID relief grants of up to $10,000. The grants would cover staffing, rent, utility, insurance, goods and PPE equipment. You can apply using www.wareham.m-a.us, there's a link there. You get the information about the grants and there's an application. There will certainly be a lot of people or small firms, um, applying for these funds. And they are going to be distributed after passing the application process and becoming qualified. There may in fact have to be a lottery to figure out who gets the money. But again, um, the small businesses in our town, specifically I'm speaking to, you should be looking into that and we do have a link on our website to that. Thank you.
That's good information. Uh, not a liaison report really, but, you know, next Tuesday again, uh, it's the federal election. You know, it, it's probably the most, uh, you know, divisive election that, that's happened in my lifetime. I think you'd have to go back to, uh, you know, 1860 to find one as divisive as this. Uh, you know, we all have our, our candidate, uh, we don't all have the same candidate. Be respectful of one another when, when you're out there voting, when you're out there campaigning, if you're holding signs. You know, if, if you don't support the other candidate, you know, just don't honk when you drive by. You don't have to, you know, reach out the window and, and show them a single digit or anything like that. Let's try to be a model for being courteous and respectful of the fact that we actually have a right to vote in this country and exercise it responsibly next Tuesday. And that's sort of all I've got to say. Uh, consent agenda, uh, we've got a couple of sets of meeting minutes and two sets of executive minutes as well.
Yes. We have the me, meeting minutes of October 13th, uh, 2020. I would move that they be approved as written.
Yeah, we were all here for both meetings, so.
That's correct. I'm, I'll do them one at a time if you want, oh, I can do them both at a time, October 13th and the October 20th, 2020 meetings. Regular meeting.
Need to meet somebody.
Uh, so we've got a motion from Judy, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick, you around?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Jim?
Uh, yes, um, yeah.
Okay, Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, so the regular minutes are approved, five zero zero. Now we need a motion to approve and hold the executive session minutes. Were we, were we all here for both? I'm thinking in July, maybe somebody was.
I think was missing, um, Patrick, I think.
What are we doing right now?
The executive session minutes.
Okay.
We have July 21st, 2020?
And October 20th, 2020. Everyone was there for, for the October 20th meeting.
I, I didn't get a chance to go in and, uh, review that. Cause I, I had to go in physically and read them, right?
Yes.
Was it sent to me?
Yes, that's correct.
So I, I did not get an opportunity to review it, so I, I respectfully request a-
Okay. Put them on next week?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. No motion was made, so no actions taken. Uh, let's see. And we have to pay the attorney.
Move the, authorize the payment to the Law Office, Richard P. Bowen, for the month of November 2020.
Second.
Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Sure.
Myself, yes, five zero zero approved.
Thank you very much.
And that's it.
Yeah, and just a reminder, you're gonna be, uh, with us meeting electronically. The warrants will be scanned to you. And, uh, I think Judy has requested a, a response from at least three of you, uh, in affirmative.
Yeah.
Yes, we did receive several warrants today, in email.
Yeah, all three, actually.
So.
And do you, do you want us to, uh, stop by to sign the, um, committee appointments also? If I'm gonna stop by and sign the, uh, warrants?
Probably on Thursday would be a, a better time to make sure that they're back there, those three appointment things.
Oh, make sure they're back across the way?
Yeah. They'll be there, they'll be there tomorrow, just to make sure that all of the paperwork is in fact done. Cuz we have, you know, part, part-time people. It would be safer to, to do it on Thursday.
Well, I'll check and if not, then I'll stop in another day or.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just for the, to actually, they're, what they're saying, the counting for right now is if you respond via email in the affirmative on the warrant that you've approved them, they'll actually, for the auditors and such, they'll staple that on to there. So you don't have to physically go in there and sign it. So.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
Okay.
Not that they don't want to see you, of course.
No. Well, the number's going up. Nobody should want to see anybody. Alan, I think it's time for your motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn the meeting by Alan, seconded by Judy. Roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you, Wareham. Good night. Be safe and we will see you next Thursday.